It's the 25th of February, it's on the calendar for a change now. It's the Plough and Park Committee. The first thing I want to do, actually, is to give a big welcome to David Burt, who are new councillor. So, welcome to the council. Hope you enjoy it. And I'm sure you've got a lot of attributes that have all got benefit. Right, apologies. Two apologies. One from Jane and one from Alf. We'll take Jane first. It's work commitments.
I propose...
I second. All in favour? Thank you. And Alf, long standing prior engagement.
I propose...
I'm second.
All in favour? Thank you. I had an email from Alan to say that please be a bit late. Right. Second item on the agenda, declarations of interest. Are there any declarations of interest?
Chairman, item 14.5, please go on. I won't be voting on that, I'll abstain because it's my neighbour. I'll happily answer any questions everybody has on the Global Mayor, because it's a direct source of money and I don't think it affects any judgment on it. I'll write it to you, thank you. And I'll put one out to you.
Thank you.
We declare an interesting item, 14.2, who is my next door neighbour? I'll remain in the room, remain silent. Make no facial expressions, we're in a meeting.
I should watch, very, very closely. Right, thank you very much. Item 3, minutes. No doubt we've all read the minutes. And are you all happy with the minutes? If so, can I have it? No, I propose a second. Second of these, Joyce, all in favour?
No, you weren't. You weren't, James.
Are they reading councillors' questions? Nobody's looking at me, so I assume... Members' reports? I thought you almost put your hand up there, didn't you? No. Thank you. Clerk's report?
There isn't one.
No, due to absence of the clerk. Item 7, deputations by the public.
Just quick, I've only just seen this, which shows probably less replacement than what it says on the agenda.
Can I just say, Mr Brooks, you've got three minutes and obviously you have to stick to items on the agenda.
Yes, it's to do with the benches and I think they feature on here on item number 11 and item number 13. I've only just seen this report on the table, so that appears to show that you're not going to be replacing the whole lot, because I wanted to remind the council that there was, we've heard the word rolling, progress of replacement of benches, but some of the councillors here may not be aware, that that was mainly for cuts close. And it wasn't just from me, but it was also approved by this council that it should stop because there was nothing wrong with the benches that were being ripped out and replaced at probably an average cost of around seven or eight hundred pounds each. That's when you include the labour to put them in. I believe the benches were five hundred pounds plus VAT. My personal view of the benches is that the so-called Victoriano ones are awful and probably costing the town council more money to maintain them than the benches which some people don't like, which have the three slats. If they're damaged, it's easy for the maintenance man to go out and fix it. One slap, easily done. And he keeps them to a very high standard of maintenance, so I can't criticise him on that. The only thing I do criticise is the fact that it's done in two job lots. And I quote what the clerk told me, that it's done so he doesn't have to tender, which I think is extraordinary. Anyway, so that's all I wanted to say, is that hopefully you won't be going out replacing benches which don't need replacing. And then there's one other final point. You always seem to have a bit of a problem with a so-called press officer for this council. But I'm wondering if that's the correct title, because if you look at employed positions in councils, which councillors can't have, that's generally the title given to a paid position. So I'm just wondering whether that should be going to possibly Alison, or maybe you just have a council spokesperson rather than a press officer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Brooks. Item 8, community infrastructure levy. No doubt we've all looked at this. I mean, my suggestion, if you go along with it, is for each and every councillor to, if you've got anything you want to say, to go direct. How do you feel about that?
Yes, I think we make some response as a town council. It's already been through one phase of consultation and I'm generally happy with it. I wondered whether we could pass a resolution something along the lines of that we note it, generally happy with it, but OTC would welcome the opportunity to discuss with RCC the most appropriate means of spending the CIL for the benefit of OCA, which seems to be...
Uncontentious, no?
I'd just like to bring...
You did, didn't you?
Yes. I'd just like to bring one thing to the council's attention, is that it's residential, it's under a pound per square metre. Now, an average house is between seventy-five and a hundred square metres. That means it puts on each house seven hundred and fifty to ten thousand. Now, once you go to a four-bedroom house, you're talking between ten thousand, a hundred and two hundred square metres, which puts it between ten thousand and twenty-five per house. Now, I would like to really know what have we managed to get out of the council before the infrastructure? You know, why did the council manage to get out of the building before the infrastructure? Because I read an article that said that only six percent of houses built that have infrastructure in the area, it worked out to about six percent. So this is a big leap and what's going to happen, it's going to be passed on to the purchaser. And this has been going, I don't know how long it's been going through and everything, but there's a lot to answer on this, especially for all the buildings that's been done in the town or started to be. It's a thousand houses, one development started, you know, they started on the dock, about two hundred tonne already. What sort of money have grabbed current infrastructure already? What percentage is that? And how does it compare with what is going to be needed by the builder? Does the builder have to put it up front? Does it come in stage payments? Does it come when the house has been sold? Does the council get it then? I mean, it's old and it's all over the place. It's really, I mean, to be honest, it's just been rubbed down and nobody's really tackled any of the issues. It's been issued with it. I'm sure a lot have rubbed down on it and everything like that, but we'll go to the council.
Right, thank you, Joyce.
May I suggest that we go along with the House of Gossery, but Dave actually does his presentation directly to the council.
Anybody else want to comment?
I would have a careful choice you said there, because one of them is notice, of course, it is described as a draft charging schedule, so it's in its infancy perhaps. So, yeah, I'll echo what George says, support Rob's comments. If Rob's comments were a proposal, I would have seconded that.
Just a question, did the second draft?
Oh, it did the second draft, didn't it?
Did it start until then?
Oh, right, yeah. But it's still a work in progress, isn't it, as well?
I'll be happy with that.
I think it's important to remember that the council will always charge these people, they've been charged in the past, this is just another way of doing it.
Please, section 107.
One of the six.
We have certainly done it in the past, but with the information I got, the undercut
event, six percent of developers that paid anything at all.
David, can we leave it at that, please? I think, are you happy to go down?
Yes, I will be.
So... I'm going to second Rob's comment.
Yeah, shall I say it again?
Yeah.
Well, I've got open town council note in the report and generally happy, however, we'd like the opportunity to discuss with the local county council on the spending for the benefit of OCA.
The most appropriate means the spending of the CIL for the benefit of OCA. Seconded by Alan. All in favour? Thank you.
You abstain?
I abstain. Right, item 9, press officers. Anybody putting their name forward? Chair, if no one else tells, then I'm happy to put my name forward. But having said that, we're approaching per, so it's all nice and good, but it probably is a month to actually get something done. If I do do that, then it will be on the proviso that if I do any work for this, that you're relevant times involved in open town council, then I should do that free of charge, so it's no conflict of interest. So I'm prepared to do that. Okay, can I just say that because Jane's not here, the mayor's not here, there is an understanding that whoever takes on this role clears whatever you're going to put in the press through the chair first, because it is the responsibility of the chairman to make sure that everything is kosher. I'm happy with that.
I would second Alan.
All in favour of Alan? Unanimous. I thought you might be. Thank you very much, Alan. Right, before we start, can I say that I think Alan's done a fantastic job on this, actually, putting this report together. So, thank you very much, Alan.
Well, I appreciate that. It's been a long work going on behind the scenes, because this is going to come out because of the, what I would describe as a public outcry, which probably, and I have said before, but maybe it's been taken out of context. But the important thing is that we've learned we move forward and all this document essentially going to do is try and put in some safeguards to make sure we don't embarrass the council, that we make sure we get the right money for money, for the public money that is spent. And the thing lying on here has to be agreed with, it's just to try and bring something to the table so people at least have something to work with. And of course, the tenders are up for renewal and regardless of who's going to be on the council next year, we need to start the process, because when it was done three years ago, we were doing the tenders in January and didn't actually award it around the August/October time, so it was quite late really. Needs to be looked at. So, and as you look at it, as you read through it, the important thing is that the council do make a decision to go out to tender and how we choose to do that, and that would ordinarily be how we're doing it in the past, where we invite previous tenders, regardless of the perception of whether our large contractor did a good job or not. The public are not fully aware of all the circumstances behind some of the occurrences. There's references, I made on 1.1, some new lights will be need to be purchased due to an instance of theft and one of accidental damage, that most of the council aware, there was an incident where some of the lights were brought down by a vehicle on Jail Street just after Christmas, and also whilst the lights were being erected, some of them were stolen, something which the council not made aware of until we did some own investigations due to a shortfall of lights. And that is in actual, actually recovering the cost of some of those lights and recovering the cost of damage through other avenues. And then on here too, the council do by tenders, that's pretty straightforward. And then the other thing is three, is whether the council feels it should have a small subcommittee that just oversees whoever does install the lights and to make sure that when they are put up, they're put up as to how we ask for them to be done, because this was, this was a huge oversight this last year. So that was it. If it hadn't, the rest of it pretty much makes sense, a tree, we need to look for trees, because the rotary are not in a position where they can offer that service.
Thank you, Alan. I think that two main points come out of that, obviously, and that is tendering, we need to obviously get ideally three tenders. And I think the suggestion of having a subcommittee, I think is pretty essential in view of what's happened this year, so that they can take note of what's been done, oversee it really to make sure it's been done properly.
And the, to stress, the subcommittee wouldn't be meeting like daily or weekly or monthly, I think weird like that, it was literally so that we do have somebody or a couple of people who will go and make sure that what is there is there and that what is, what the council asks for done is done. So it's not going to be an overdone job role.
No, I think we need to make a record of it, because obviously because of the election, we can't, we can't ask the names to go forward now, we've got to wait until after the election.
Yes, yes.
I propose that we note his comments.
Yes.
That's all we need in the minutes. Propose.
Before we vote, I think it's essential that this...
The tendering process will have to go ahead and garden where it's on the council, anyway. Subcommittees can be appointed after, after May.
But this needs to be wrongly not, that particular thing.
Yes, yeah, part of it could be deferred, the appointment of a subcommittee could be deferred till the new election year.
Yes.
But the important, the important element of this is the tendering.
Yes.
So that gets them all going.
Well, we've had to propose a second, all in favour?
Sorry, just a question, you mean now presumably?
We start the process in... They start the process of tendering now, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, unanimous. Thank you, Alan. Right, Ben, Joyce's recreation.
Joyce?
The Joyce, this is... Is this Cherry Road here?
Yes, thank you, John. This was discussed many months ago and was agreed. We've had a lot of inquiries from people like the dog walkers who want to just sit there and watch their dog. It was mostly dog walkers that I got the inquiries from and it was, it was brought before council ages ago and we said yes to it, unless it's one that's just slipped through the net of it. Now, I know you wouldn't find it because it wasn't minuted, so can we have it minuted net this time? But that's, that was agreed at that meeting.
Yeah, I do remember that, actually, I have to say, I do support what Joyce is saying. I can remember it being discussed and I think it was accepted.
Yeah, it doesn't need to be one like the High Street, it doesn't need to be that kind. We've already put one in near to the Thomas play area, there, for people to sit and watch the turbos.
So if you can come in and choose the one you want?
Sorry, say again.
If this is approved now, then you can come in and choose the one that you want.
Well, the same one that we've already got now, it's a cheaper version, that's on. But I'll miss some.
Well, presumably there's money in the budget for this, though, isn't there? So in that event, I would propose that we accept item 11, that the benches approved for installation at Cherry, first line.
To be decided by board members exactly where, I think, would be an idea.
Fine.
There's certainly a need for a bench.
It's made of concrete, you're putting it in.
Right, we've had closer and seconded.
I propose installed. Oh, no, let Joyce be the promoter. I'll happily second that it is, if we go with it.
All in favour? Unanimous. Thank you very much. Right, maintained by our defence, cuts close. Good drop.
Do you want to speak, Mr Brooks?
Yes. Well, this is another one that's...
Joyce, thank you.
We've had one quote.
Yeah, we need more than one quote. So, really, truly, that should be progressed. It was mentioned some months ago...
Two thousand pounds.
It was about three thousand pounds.
Three thousand pounds.
Yeah, and it was to go into the budget, but we need, we need three tenders. So it slipped through the net again, Chair.
Can anybody throw a light on that?
I recall that some, it was discussed, oh, some, two or three years ago, in actual fact, it was, there was this discussion around the military doing it, do you remember? And they were going to do it almost as a goodwill community project.
In canyons.
Yes, you would have never known without that. But unfortunately, it fell by the wayside, the Royal Air Force moved out, I think, and it just never happened. I do recall that being an instance.
Yes, but did we not have some community?
Never happened.
It never, all right.
It never happened, it was...
Haven't, from the police side, the probation service, that didn't happen.
Oh, no, that never happened.
Tell me this mention, down south, when Asbos were working, there were quite a few partied, we had the fence around our recreation ground and there was a lot of fence park painted by them.
Yes, that's what I was saying.
All we had to do was to supply the materials.
Can I propose that we go out to tender and get it into the budget, because the fence is looking pretty awful.
An eyesore. You've got to propose it, anybody want to second that?
Well, I would second that it goes out to tender, because we need to get it, get it priced out, so we can exactly all spend on it.
Yes, you do. So all in favour? Yes, unanimous. Right, item 13, replacement of seating on Oakham High Street. Joyce and Alison, shall I start off with Alison?
This is the report that we agreed. The chairman asked me to give you a copy of this tonight. This is what we agreed in a meeting sometime last year to get the contractors out to go through all the benches in the town, which is what I've done, or what he's done, or whatever. All I'll say is that there's a rolling programme for the maintenance, which is done every year, which starts in May. And I spoke to him this week, there's one that definitely needs replacing at Norman Rowan, and that could be estimated between eight hundred and fifteen hundred, because it's on a concrete base, you probably know more...
That's called Everton Road.
You probably know more than me, George. Yeah, so to get out and then put in a new one in, it's going to be between eight hundred and fifteen hundred, but that is the one that he recommends, definitely needs replacing. And there's two that need repairing, only small, one's a slat and one's a bolt, which I've told him to go ahead and do. So that's all I'm going to say on this, but I mean, you want to speak?
I don't know if it's a title error or what, but to discuss, what's it say? To discuss a rolling programme. I'm sorry, to discuss the rolling programme, it should be. This rolling programme has been a policy of this town council since 2000. And it started because I put a bench in at the back of the library as my mayoral year and I didn't want to cluck on it, so it didn't get, so maybe no one's used on it. The next, the next one alongside it was done in memory of somebody from Oakham in Blue, and I've forgotten her name, that was done. The ones in front of the library don't belong to Oakham Town Council at all, they belong to Rutland County Council and for some reason, we have taken them over and painted them each year. The rolling programme then went on, and this is from the previous clerk, and two, for some reason, two went in one year in front of the Communal Cathedral Church. And the idea was to make it uniform, get rid of the concrete ones and replace them one a year with a uniform all the way down the High Street. For some reason, a new one went in in Jail Street and then a new one went in at the top of Jail Street by Tesco. The one outside CAB has been on the cards for ages to be replaced. It's not, it's nothing to do with them being old or need replacing or they're dangerous or anything like that, and you can go to the shelter, by the way, if the assistant clerk, there's slats there in the shelter, so if there are any slats that we're replacing, then there, there they are, we don't have to buy them. But the whole idea from 2000 onwards was to replace the concrete ones with a uniform set of seats. Now, if it had been done properly, we would have finished that rolling programme by now, because there's two outside Wilkos, there's two more outside the railway station. We've got to, we've got to show that we're, that we're attractive, you know what attractive means, to the visitors of this town. And that is the rolling programme that's been in, on this agenda since 2000.
By me and myself.
Joyce, how many seats are there with concrete best that need, concrete seats that need to be...
That's what I'm saying, it's two outside Wilkos.
How many in total, how many, how many seats?
Five, I think. But we only need to do one year and spread the load. Well, we've not done it for the last three years, we would have almost completed the rolling programme by then. You see what I mean?
Thank you, Joyce. Can anybody else who was on the council at that time, throw any light on this?
I'm the only one.
Well, I've been on the council for five years, it has been mentioned before, and it has, I can confirm that the rolling programme appears to involve two of the halls. And looking at this here, if we get this moving again, it says here to make decisions as necessary, and I would say that the decision that needs to be made is just, do the council this evening want to make the decision to restart the rolling programme on replacement of the benches specifically? And if that's the case, then I would, I will challenge this to the point where I was saying, I propose that the council finishes off replacing those five benches every one year.
I was going to say that, that saved me, sir.
Well, can I just add then? Yes, that's what I would propose. The one at Long Row, that's really out of, out of the town centre, and that could be one of the cheaper ones that we've got going in at Cherry. You don't need these thousand-pound ones up there.
The lime head ones, aren't they, all the lime?
Yes, yes.
Yes, this is, I recall this from previous council meetings, where we've, we've taken out, certainly taken out... certainly taken out spolty chairs or benches, and then we put in the better quality, the tighter one, the lime ones, because then it's giving all the way possible.
Yeah.
But yeah, the proposal would be, if you're happy with me to go with it, is that we, we could, we finish up these five benches on the high street, or the high street stroke outside the station.
One a year.
One a year. So we complete it by 2000.
Yeah, I'm perfectly happy with it.
The one outside CAB, does it have to do with Queen's Hill, do you believe?
It is, and so the plaque ought to, ought to come on off and go on the new, on the new one. That should not be discarded, no.
And bear in mind, every year, the, the maintenance people, whatever their names, they, they check every seat.
Oh, yes, they do. And they missed mine for the last seven years at the back of the library.
Joyce, can I suggest you consider putting a plaque on it?
No, no, I don't want, not until I've gone, chairman, and then you can put in memory of.
So do you want me to add that one on then, Joyce?
Sorry, say again.
Do you want me to add the lime one on then?
No, it's, it's already been done this year. I brought it to the attention of the carter.
Right.
So I suggest the one outside CAB, and that would give the whole of that corner the uniformity. I propose. What? Whatever.
Shall we start the rolling programme, replacing five benches on the high street at one per year?
Yeah.
Start it with the CAB.
That's been proposed by Joyce, seconded by Adam. All in favour? Thank you, unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce.
Thank you.
My application.
Yes.
Is there something coming up about this? Oh, you wanted me to picture it.
Yeah, oh, dentists, dentists. Isn't that very nice, isn't it? Right.
Not used to that standard.
I have to say, this one is to sell two elm trees, which got me thinking, who wouldn't, in their right mind, actually plant a couple of elm trees? So I have written a statement for it to go to Brooklyn County Council. Before I do, however, it does say in here, he's ticked. It's Mr Bird, I think. Anyway.
Is that Sam Bird?
He's ticked conditions of the trees, and he said, yes. They're diseased, or have fears that they may break or fall. Alleged damage to property, yes. Subsidance or damage to drains. There's one supporting matter which I've discussed with Assistant Carl. So that. And it's that. Notehead in paper. And it's by somebody called Simon Webster, and he doesn't give a telephone number. I've inspected the trees in front of the Ammon Hall, and I've noted the following. The trees are diseased and dangerous, and present a risk to the public. There is damage to the footings and drainage system of this building. If you require any further information, please contact me, which I couldn't do in the time. So I spoke to the planning officer, and this is my reply to all that. There's a discrepancy in the description. The trees in questions, in question are limes. They're either large leaf or the common lime. I cannot be completely accurate until in full leaf. Judging by its vigorous growth, there is probably nothing wrong with them. They need to be pruned properly by a competent local tree surgeon, like the limes in front of Wetherspoons and at the rear of Wilco's. I recommend, and I don't know whether it'll, I mean, it's in my authority to do it, if we're going to planning this well, that the owner submits a new proposal and gives accurate details of the damage to the brickwork and the actual area of disease as indicated in the proposal. In the event of this recommendation being refused, to keep the trees, that is, from their lime trees, I suggest we insist on replacements. The problem I have with that, the planning officer says that we can't insist on replacements. But I have, I have grave doubts that, that it shouldn't go ahead until the planning officer has a look at these trees and comes to the conclusion that they're not elm trees, they are lime trees. So I don't know what you want to do with that, but I wouldn't approve that application.
Thank you, Joyce. Perhaps the way forward with this is to, we won't need so much detail, but to highlight what Joyce has said.
You can have that, Paulson.
Yeah, perhaps you.
So just presee it.
Presee it.
They do need to be told that they're not elm trees. Nobody in their right mind would put elm trees in that space.
I think you said elm tree, because elm trees are the ones that get diseases.
Yes, everybody's watching on to elm.
So, they are, actually, they've been topped quite a few times. While I've been in Oakham, they've been topped quite a few times.
And that's how.
And that's what they do to them, they top them.
Yes, that's, that's how they keep them in the tree, just like the Wetherspoon ones.
Do, do the rooms travel? When is it likely that there would be any?
No, because the Wetherspoon ones are, are still near to the, to the building, so I can't see any difference.
And you've, and have you noted any disease?
Not, not that they're confined.
No, because after your telephone conversation, I did go and have a look, and I, I'm not an expert like you, but I couldn't see any noticeable disease.
They just want some tender loving care.
There's no cracks on them, do you?
No.
Anyway, no cracks.
So I would not recommend selling these trees.
Chairman, shall I propose that we accept the tree warden's report and forward the comments to the planning officer? Right.
Yes.
Do you second that? You, you make that, so I'll second it for Adam. All in favour? Thank you, you have. Thank you, Joyce. Application number two.
Mr George, is that?
It's Joyce.
Mr George.
Thank you, Joyce.
Edward George, I have no problem with these at all. All these trees are very close together, and some are not thriving, and really, I've got a lot of the recommendation. Proposed recommendation.
I'll second that. All in favour?
Yeah.
Anybody against? Sting, look.
Yeah. Yes.
Chairman, before we move on to item three, noting the name of the applicant, I think it might be wise if I withdraw from the meeting.
It's a competitor. Excuse me for that one. I'm not sure if what debate that would be, I probably shouldn't be here.
Captain, Mr Cross, isn't it? Is that what you're talking about?
I presume it's that, Cross, I don't know. I don't even know, we should try, at the weekend, try to go on site, but you couldn't, you couldn't get onto the, you couldn't get onto the site planning site every weekend. Not on Sunday, anyway.
These compresses, I don't know whether it's a landing area, whatever it is, but you can see it's multi-stemmed.
Yes.
It's not an area I very often walk. So I did go and have a look, and came back straight away to tell the assistant park what I thought. They're going to replace this tree. Just to the left of that, no, no, back up, just to the right, you'll see there's a raised bed by the litter bin. And when I went to have a look, there were the shopkeepers, or tenants, or I should say, replanting all that into a very nice area. And they, yeah, and they've got, they've got an idea to replace this tree, and I suggested to them a nice flowering cherry as a kind.
You wouldn't need anything to spread white, because that's, they're conditioning you.
Now, I do know the garden centre who is dealing, or they are dealing with, which I will not name at this point. He is very good with his trees, and, and the tenants said, we'll go back to him and suggest we have some sort of nice flowering, and he will decide on what kind of tree. To the right of it, they've already done it, and it's in a conservation area, they've locked a sea anothis. They're not taking that out, they're going to let it grow, and I think that was done on the advice of the garden centre. And I think it'll look quite nice. But that one needs to come out and be replaced with something very nice. At the expense of the tenants. Nice, I propose.
My second that. Anybody else want to say anything? All in favour? No, thank you.
Oh, I forgot.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Right, item four. A single storey side and rear extension to thirteen Ninety Gale Way. We're looking at this, I think it's important that we also, if you haven't done so, have a look at the environmental letter that's sent. Because I think if we approve it, I've suggested that we, as mentioned, that the environment letter is noted. And you'll see why, if you put it up and you can read it. Got any thoughts about that?
Yeah, there's one thing, you'd have to put a special name there if it's on the building name, so it doesn't sort it out.
Comments, please?
I think that's, that's just a caveat, they've got most letters to be fair, because this is a raid on area as well, isn't it?
Yes.
I think that's just a.
Well, the raid on would cover it, if you put a raid on the area, you need to cover that.
Me, thanks, me, it's a bit of a name anyway, so it's a bit of a fun start.
I personally think it would be appropriate to mention it.
Yes, mention it, and then when they go to building control, they'll make a put on it.
So at least we're on board. And that is a ruck round, right round the back, siding round the back.
Yes.
Oh, okay. But there's plenty of those down there.
There seems to be quite room when you look at the bottom block. Plenty of room on the block, isn't there? So if.
With a caveat. Anybody else?
I have, I'll second that. Right, and agree that the caveat goes in about recognizing the environment letter, that it was noted. Right. All happy with that?
All in favour?
All in favour, promise to stay. All in, yeah, thank you. Item five, single storey extension to Three Hill Road. I understand that the, the back gardens to these properties is quite extensive.
Yeah, they're going twenty-five yards long.
And you've got a dog house at the bottom.
What we have now, it doesn't go down anymore.
A big shed when it goes out the way. Is that cutting any light or anything? Anybody?
Well, obviously, I'm going to have to stay on the boat, but I live next door to this house. I have to refill the magazines in, because I knew you the first hand. I've, I've looked at this, and I've obviously got objected as a neighbour. The existing plan, which was up a minute ago, is a, is a previously installed conservatory stroke shanty town that the previous owner built without planning permission. The owner before had, had a small three by three conservatory, which was flat roof. And then this, this other person moved in and extended that. They wanted to make it bigger, and RCC refused, so they went ahead and did it anyway. And it's, it's not, it's not a very pleasant looking thing. So this current tenant, when they bought property, they've submitted a, this plan and the building that they're proposing, which is a proper-built conservatory, will make good the poor work from the previous occupant.
What's the value of your house, that, considerably?
Surely knocking this one down.
No, that one we're going down, and the other one we're going up. So that's the reason that the application was put about, because it's, it's an eyesore, that's what is there.
Yeah, I think it's like, as if it couldn't see anything, because what annoys me now is that I didn't knock next door and say, can I just, I see, hold it, hold it.
You could take them too, yeah.
And the, it doesn't, it doesn't restrict any light, because between number one and number three, there's a, a six-foot wall anyway, which is, comes up to just below the eaves of that building, so it doesn't impact on us at all. So there's no issue.
It is good, it's covering up to the boundary line.
It, it, it is within about six inches of that boundary line, but the brick wall that is there is literally on the boundary line, and that's my brick wall. And that was put in something fifteen years ago when we got, when we had a build.
Well, I'm having that, I prefer it's the big, big section. All in favour?
No, you second that, you second that.
All in favour? Alan?
Alan, I've seen, can you recall my abstention?
Did that get passed?
Yes.
Did we have enough?
Right, application number six. Two externally illuminated individual letters with rounded edges. One externally illuminated individual letters with rounded edges fitted directly on rows to match. Background, two externally illuminated mastons and logos. One internally illuminated twin post sign with pizza logo. One internally illuminated little logo with red acrylic and the old buttress panels. I'm sure you all understood that.
There's one comment, it's already up there.
It's just, yeah, it's funny.
Were you going to say?
This retrospective, this.
Yeah. They, they put them on the building for one reason, they want to get the scaffolding down, and it's easy, it's where to do it, isn't it?
Well, it's, at the end of the day, we do have shown it up, it's gone up, it doesn't look too bad, and it's covering these other problems.
It's in keeping with the rest of their fleet, so, yes.
Yeah, it, it, it doesn't look out of place at all.
Can I have a proposal then?
Yeah, I'll propose.
Second that?
Yeah.
All in favour? Next, thank you. No, the next one we don't need to do, it has been dealt with.
Yes, yeah, it's been dealt with.
Item eight. Application eight, copy so, replace damaged stone and brickwork. Replace damaged and missing gutters and downrights. Replace, repair and make of all windows and doors. Repair a roof, repair chimney stacks. Raise two metre front gate pillars by point six hundred and reset the existing pillar caps to internal replacements. I'd bring down it because it's a listed building.
It is.
That providing all work is carried out to the specification and requirements of listed building regulations.
Yeah, I, I, I do hope they're not going to put plastic windows in.
But that should be stopped.
Yes.
You're not allowed to do that.
No.
Unless things have changed.
They won't allow it on the dwarf country, so hopefully they won't allow it here.
I mean, usually it's hardwood, isn't it, isn't it?
Yeah. Can you read that again for me, if you second?
Normally hardwood.
No, you, you, did you make a proposal?
Yeah, but providing all work is carried out to the specification and requirement of listed buildings regulations.
Chair, chairman, if I may ask, I was rather hoping there'd be more information about the materials being, being application, because we approve, or we recommend approval or not approving, based on the application in front of us, and I didn't think.
That's why I wrote that statement, because in a way it covers that. Because it covers, it covers material, it covers everything. And unless you want to add to, add to that statement.
Could you just repeat your statement, please, chairman?
Yeah, providing, uh approved, providing all work is carried out to the specification and requirement of listed building regulations.
Whereabouts it, it has been.
Fros, no, 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 Fros House, we're talking. Oh, a big one. Yes, we've done this.
We've already done that.
Yeah. This is.
This is the last one.
Is he natural still?
It's a beautiful building.
He's a stone.
He's a stone.
Beautiful.
Great tune, probably, doesn't she?
Very historic building.
Has it got mullins on the windows and things like that?
Yeah, mullin windows, yeah.
Yeah, they've got to be.
Any other comments? So are you happy to go along with? Or do you want to add to what I've written? I have to know what your caveat says.
Alan? I'm not content with that, but I've written, chairman, so.
Right.
Well, can we, we can have a vote anyway, so.
Of course, yeah.
So to have a proposal.
Which you?
Of your statement, of the statement that we.
I'll, I'll propose.
Uh with that statement. Anybody want a second then?
I'll second that.
Now, all in favour? Against? Two, two against. David, can we call you?
Yes, I can.
Yes? They're against.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, it's up. I haven't seen the building till.
Right, thank you very much then, um that brings the meeting to conclusion. So lady and gentleman, thank you very much.